Okay, can I have a motion to open the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, welcome everybody to the work session of Tuesday, February 7th. Um, we have a lot of firefighters and first responders and ambulants here. So why don't, um, why don't we get started with that discussion? Jill, do you want to lead us off?
Um, sure, we've got Josh Sherman here, our assessor, to um, give us an overview of the statewide exemptions around for firefighters and ambulants. Hi Josh.
Hi, hi everybody.
We've got a hacked house tonight.
Well, I'm very popular as usual.
As you know.
And modest.
Josh, you gonna kick us off?
I'd be happy to. Okay, so back in December, I don't know why my camera keeps kicking off, my apologies. Uh, back in December, Governor Hokel signed um, a law that made um, current law sunset in 2025. So what we need to do is we need a couple, we have to have a public hearing and a motion um, at some point to reinstitute the volunteer firemen and ambulance corps volunteers. Um, there's a couple of points, we currently offer this exemption uh, with a straight 10%, uh, which is um, the highest that the state allows. Uh, right now, requirement is a five-year active service commitment. And um, with this provision, it would allow the town at local option to reduce that down to two years. Um, and the reason we understand is that it helps with the retention, it helps with being able to serve the community, and I did a tax impact statement on that, we would be adding about twenty-three new volunteers, uh, and that would be spread out, would cost about eighty-five hundred dollars per year. And obviously that would be spread out through the, the rest of the town.
Among the remainder of the town?
Amongst the remainder of the town, correct. And that, and that would be just to the town assessment role, so it's, it's really a de minimis.
Right.
Reduction, correct.
That's super helpful, but uh, it's not, nothing that should be concerned about financially.
No.
It, it, it certainly would not, uh, it certainly would not.
So Josh, what is, what is the timing of this exactly for us, insofar as when do we have to set the public hearing, when does it need to be approved by?
Well, if we want to make this for the 2023 assessment role, uh, we should probably do it in the next consecutive meetings. Uh, I have to check the law, I want to say there's probably a ninety-day provision that it would need to be enacted uh, in order for that to qualify for the June first, end of assessment role.
So. So, oh, so we really do need to do that soon then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um.
Just could put it out for next week?
We could put it out for next week to um, set the public hearing for E.
The twenty-eighth?
But we're gonna introduce legislation, we should do that first. There's one other decision point, I think, too, Josh, right, there's a new benefit um, with respect, I assume the town would want to do this, but um, new benefit for spouses or volunteers who are killed in the lifetime duties of lifetime uh, a benefit available. So, all right, that would be part of the local law.
Okay.
Josh, do you have numbers on that? Well, it's hard to get it, it's hard to tell you, yeah, that's actually possible, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope it's zero. Yeah.
Wish I did.
I, I, I don't, I don't know how you say no, not that it was saying.
No, no.
Yeah.
I don't know how you say no.
You know, if I could run a poll, the, the, and also is with regard to the veteran exemption, uh, the language does run insistently with that, so we currently do offer unmarried, surviving spouses and veterans same exemption that, that they had.
Okay.
Very quickly, I, I asked someone in town with their father was a veteran, a vet. I think I told this story before because I did not see him on the rolls, he needed to make sure that was, know that he was a vet. And he responded that his dad was not a veterinarian. Are you kidding me? You know your father is a vet, but I had to explain it to him, but the best of the brides are in Newcastle.
Well, he needed a policy, so it wouldn't happen.
I wish I was making it up, but I'm.
So what would be our next step, Ed, do we just will hold this over for?
Introduce legislation next week.
Next week, okay. All right, anybody, anybody here?
I mean, I'll say, I'm our first field captain of C-VAC, so thank you, first of all, for this, I do think this is a benefit that does help us to recruit, retain members. Um, that's a small thank you for the work that we all do, to go out on, on calls all the time.
You know, we've been looking, we always have been looking for things to do to help to benefit our first responders, and we've been kind of hamstrung with what we're allowed to do, so now that we finally have something that we can do for you, I think we're all pretty, pretty happy to be able to do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're very grateful to, to everything you do, and this is, this is a way to show it other than saying thank you.
We appreciate that.
I just wanted to say one thing for the, both the fire department and the ambulance corps. I don't know if you guys realize, but a lot of us put in about seven hundred hours a year. That's ten or fifteen hours a week. Oh, just wanted to make you aware of that, that's a, it's a big, it's a big commitment for the fire department people, the ambulance corps.
Yeah, I, I should introduce our members that are here, this is Jimmy Poster, he's been a member about two years. Leanna has been a member since the summer, she's now EMT, Beth, EMT Bella's been a member for a number of years. And Joe Jankulesko has been a member for many years, yes, past captain.
So yeah, I just want to mention that, that we all do put in a tremendous amount of hours, and we do it, we just want to. It's not like, you know, we, we doing this for the taxes or not, but it's important for everybody to know that we put in a tremendous amount of hours.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, unfortunately, we've used you a number of times, and.
Yeah, so.
You guys are.
Yeah.
And remarkable, and, you know.
And just like you guys. Just like you guys, a lot of, a lot of you guys have full-time jobs too, and you put in tremendous hours for the town, so we thank you on that.
You guys are doing a wonderful um, informational campaign right now on social media, and I, I think it's
Yeah.
really helpful to see what you guys are really doing behind the scenes.
Yeah, we've been trying to a lot more social media to get the word out, so people understand what we do, and hopefully want to join us, contribute and whatnot.
Yeah. Especially those of us who are maybe fortunate enough not to have you come to us.
You should do some TikTok videos for the high school kids, let them to join.
Where?
Yeah.
Who's dancing?
Thank you.
Actually, they're flexing tonight to do youth corps members for next year, that's, that's happening tonight.
Oh, that's great.
All right.
Yeah, just really quick, Paul, I'm the chief of the Chappaqua Fire Department, and echoing everything that uh, you know, our colleagues from C-VAC had said, the reduction from five years to two years is also very key, because at least from the fire department perspective, when you join, you're required to graduate or finish the fire academy course within the first year. So it's kind of putting some light at the end of the tunnel, particularly for someone who's working in the city, as Jimmy had indicated, you have to do about forty hours of training in-house before we let you sign up for a course with the county. And then the county course is a hundred seventy hours, and that doesn't include the additional um, EMR training, emergency responder, medic for basically lollipop and a Band-Aid, but you still have to be there for that, as well as CPR, so that and reducing it from five years to two years would have an immediate impact, because people will see that there is a, a reason that I'm going through two nights a week, and then all day on Saturdays, and foregoing a lot of family obligations, so.
Practically speaking, how long does it take to complete that hundred seventy hours?
About a hundred seventy hours.
Is that, is that like, is it over six months or over course of a year?
No, no, it's usually over the period of, I'll say roughly three months, what it normally will end up being is Monday and Tues- uh, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday nights at the training center, then all day on Saturdays. There is a, an intensive course that's done once a year, usually in beginning of June, that's eight hours a day for two weeks. And you are just shocked by the time you're done, because the training that they do on the fireside is virtually identical to what paid departments go through. They do expand it and require their members to become EMTs, we don't have that requirement, so it's shorter from a duration. But as far as live fire, ladders, Hearst tools for practicing extrication, um, confined space awareness, um, crawling through scenarios where your mask is blacked out, it's all the same, you know, type of work, and they've put a lot more responsibility on the home departments to have these people ready before they go to the academy. So, if Jill Shapiro joins tomorrow, yes, she's got to give this commitment of forty to fifty hours of in-house training. But I now have five or six firefighters who are already firefighters and done their training, who are now working to train Jill Shapiro and anyone else who joins. So it does have a um, domino effect as far as the number of people that are impacted when a new person joins, just like with, again, the team from C-VAC. It's not just, nobody in our line of volunteering is an island, you've got this entire support network, but it's not just simply, hey, call me if you have a problem, it's hands-on, people are engaged to make sure that you walk in the door to the firehouse, you walk in the door to the ambulance barn, you're there to succeed, and we're gonna give you every opportunity to do so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have the EMT course, about same number of hours, so same, same sort of thing, where you come in, you do hundred seventy, hundred eighty hours at a course, and then after that, you do additional training at C-VAC before it'd be less than go out by themselves.
Will you guys make history, just like the gentleman behind you?
Oh, great, there's a chair, great, there's a chair in front.
Great, we get some.
There's a chair in front.
I did, I actually did, I'm saying, I, I, if you didn't understand that, I would have. I said practically, practically, there's a.
All right, let's move on.
Heard a fight.
Okay, so, um, all right, that's fine, so we'll, we're gonna introduce legislation at our next meeting. Everybody just move a little bit, we're having a meeting.
And is that, should we also come to that meeting, to the public hearing, is that?
Sure.
Yeah, 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 but the, so the meeting on the, the meeting on the fourteenth is gonna be to set the public hearing, and then the, the twenty-eighth, yes, you should draw.
Yeah.
We're actually just gonna be talking about introducing LoSAP to the board. So just sit down for two seconds?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Hey, I just had one final thing to that, I'm sorry, Jill.
Sure, of course.
Just as, as a, as a sidebar, if, if you guys were interested in attending another meeting, so the next cell is gonna be the school board, and so, uh, that's the other piece of this, so the, doing that the town.
The school board, you need to attend the school board meeting in addition, because our exemption only applies to town taxes. And as you're aware, the line chair of your property taxes is the school.
Yeah.
And so they make their own decisions as to exemptions. I'm sorry, that, that's.
Yes, thank you for, for clarifying, and so I'll pass along every, all the legislation that we pass uh, to the school districts, and obviously they'll make their own decision, but I think that a meeting, pending some meetings would be a, a good idea.
Well, I'm gonna, I will call and let them know that the town board is in favor of this, um, and hopefully it'll.
Thank you.
Help their decision.
Appreciate that.
Um.
All right, next step on this.
Right, so we're set there, um, Josh, hold on just a second, we're just gonna talk about LoSAP, um, and then we'll come back to Home Rule, okay?
Sounds great.
Um, so we've had some conversations with um, C-VAC regarding the introduction of LoSAP, which is basically, um, it's a length of service uh, pension for volunteers, the fire departments have it for years, they're a taxing authority, so they basically are in control of their own destiny. Uh, C-VAC doesn't have that luxury, um, they're a volunteer organization, but they're a not-for-profit and operate on donations from private individuals, the town doesn't formally support them in terms, in terms of, you know, a tax subject. Um, and so one of the things that uh, we'd like to introduce to the board is the creation of this LoSAP program for C-VAC. It would be another way for the town to take and um, present a tangible support to the organization, um, to help them um, attract and retain members, on, and basically provide their members with a pension credit based upon the number of years that they've worked. It basically works in parallel to what uh, both Millwood and Chappaqua Fire Departments have. Um, it would be an introduction, it would be something that goes into our budget for twenty twenty-four. Um, and we just wanted to take the temperature of the board, you know, more, um, and we will have um, some additional conversations about it. But we just want to introduce the concept to the board and make sure that this is something that the board wanted us to move forward with.
And we're, we're in the minority, as I understand.
Oh, completely, yes, um, we are literally the only VAC in Westchester County that does not have it, so, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, all, all the Mount Pleasant ones have it, now Kisco has it, and in fact, now Kisco just increased theirs to thirty dollars a month, money.
Absolutely.
So we're very much minorities, I'm not having it, we're at a big disadvantage, because we don't have it, so this will help us in a number of ways, one will help us recruit people, more important than that, help us retain people. Maybe more important than that, encourage the people we have to actually do more for us, because in order to get the credit, you need to do a certain number of things, the state describes, you have to get a hundred points. And the state describes how you can get points, so you have to ride, you have to go on call, just go to trainings.
Right.
Become EMT, become drivers, do various things to work for us actively, we have a lot of members, some of whom are very active, people you see here, some of whom are not quite as active, so the people who are not quite as active will hopefully be encouraged to become more active, they can take advantage of this program.
There's another element to it as well, we have several members who want to do nothing in their lives other than being EMT or a medic, and the result is they ride with the various agencies, okay? I'd rather they ride more with us than say, you or show somebody else.
Right.
A lot of people, uh, the people I'm thinking of, for example, work sixty hours a week, seventy hours a week sometimes as EMTs or medics, because they're paid so poorly, if we could pay, or Netflix twenty years from now, that's something they would consume.
Right.
Okay, uh, we'll ride with you, maybe they, they're from here, okay? I'll ride with you in Chappaqua, I don't worry about going riding someplace else.
And it incentivizes them to do that, because they get their points.
And there's so many people on the gate, gate economy, basically the gate workers, they sign up wherever they have hours.
So we had, I remember yesterday telling me, she's gonna go start working for WENS to get some more money in hours, so if we were to be able to offer her this program, maybe she wouldn't do that, maybe she would ride for us more. So we're seeing that a lot, where people ride for us a little bit, but they could then ride other places as well. And this will help, as Joe said, to encourage them to vote more time dots, which is what we want.
So even when they ride for a paid agency, they're paid very little.
Yeah.
Uh, I got paid more as a school bus driver than an EMT does pay for a performance.
And, and it, it's, the, the irony of that can't be, you know, isn't stark enough, um, what our volunteer first responders um, provide to the town, um, as volunteers, in terms of just money saved, can't be understated. If we had to, you know, provide paid uh, first responders, ambulance, fire, you're talking millions and millions of dollars.
Absolutely.
Um, and again, hard to get skilled people, and you're never gonna get more dedicated people than the volunteers who live in town, so.
Thank you.
Yep, we, you know, we very much want to take in, in support of any of that.
Appreciate that.
I'm totally sold.
So just one, an, an agency that's benefited greatly from this.
Yeah.
It's made the Chappaqua Fire Department stronger, because we've taken our internal bylaws and rules and regulations and tied them into LoSAP, selfishly, because that takes any interpretation out of it, that this is what the law is, but our members have to, in order to be considered an active member, have to make their fifty points. In order to make fifty points, you have to make a minimum of ten percent of the alarms for the year. The other half of your fifty points comes from your drills and training, so we've tied our drills and training so that you can't just show up for calls, you also have to attend the um, public relations events, the fires prevention events, but more importantly, the training, so that you have to go to the training center, participate in live fire twice a year. And that's given us the ability to make sure that our members, again, these skills are all perishable, we don't run into burning buildings every day, but we do everything we can to make sure people are trained to the point where it does become a reflex. And in order to do that, they're incentivized because of this LoSAP program.
And that's exactly what we want to do at C-VAC, is, is have that situation where people are incentivized to do what we want to do.
So I think the whole town board is in favor of this, honestly, you know, fiscally, we have to figure out how we can make it work, it's not an insignificant amount of money. Um, but we can have further cut, you know, the numbers, when we met you, me and Jill and Rob.
Yeah, a little shocked.
We were a little shocked, okay, I didn't want to say that, but yes. Um, so I think we, we need to figure out fiscally how that can work, and we can have some further discussions, but in general, I think we're all absolutely on board, anything we can do to help incentivize, you know, people to join the volunteer corps.
Thank you, it's good for the town.
I'm sorry.
Absolutely, it is.
And Jill, I appreciate you sharing that point, it keeps some of the most skilled people, incentivizes them to come back and ride with us.
Part of the piece of income, definitely.
Not to say other people aren't skilled, but, but, but select few.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Mark, before you go, your hundred seventy hours, practically speaking?
Yes.
Same amount of time?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, have you not met Paul?
Paul showed up at my house the other day, because I don't have time.
Oh, no, there's a fire.
Got him, has that on his wall, it's like.
Why so? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I called and they shut up.
So Josh, um, let's talk about home rule legislation. So, uh, Assemblyman Burdick, um, is very interested to uh, to know how the, the town feels or their interest in home rule legislation regarding our ability to do what exactly, to?
So what, what this legislation would allow is for local option. It would allow me as the assessor to assess condominiums and cooperative.
Own. Hey Josh, can you talk a little louder? You're breaking up a little bit.
I'm sorry, is that, is that better?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so what it would allow me to do is, it would allow me to assess condominiums and co-ops at market value. Currently, under the property tax law three thirty-nine Y, just raise your hand, Christine, if you can't hear me. Are you good?
We can hear you.
We can hear you now.
It's a little noise out there.
Which, uh, which allows me, at this point, to, uh, we use the income approach. And what that does is it undervalues the property compared to a fee simple or residential house. Uh, and it allows us to collect only forty to sixty percent.
And Josh, to be clear though, so people don't get along, my understanding is that it's only for new construction, is that right, or is it for any property?
It's only for new construction, um, if you remember, I believe it was in two thousand seventeen, uh, the town board did enact legislation that would prevent uh, buildings that were built not as condominiums. While they can convert, it would, it would disallow me from valuing them that way. So depending on what the future looks like as far as uh, new housing stock and growing our, our stock, whether we uh, have room for, for new condominiums or not, that would be something for the town board to consider. You know, for the future plan.
Can, can you clarify something based on the question you just asked, you said?
It's only for new construction, so we, we can't retroactively get a.
Well, no, like, so say a building was converted into condominiums, that wouldn't be considered new construction, it has to be denovo.
New, new, right.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Josh, has there been analysis of any impacts one way or the other?
It was, it was, so, in, in other words, what, what would it do, obviously, the first thing I think of is affordability. Uh, when people move somewhere and they want to buy a condo, it's because they want their taxes to be lowered, among other reasons. Um.
That ultimately was the reason that Governor Hokel gave for vetoing this original bill. Assemblyman, Assemblywoman Gayliff, who actually wrote the legislation, um, had a comment, and I, I believe she stated that uh, Governor Hokel didn't quite understand what this was meant to do. For those that can afford eight hundred thousand, a million dollar condominium, that's not the, the market that is going to be affected by that affordability. So it really pushes the tax burden onto the lower valued properties, a, as well as everybody else to pick up that.
Well, also Josh, I know that our, the school district was concerned that, you know, condos or, or co-ops that are not taxed at fair market value, you're having other properties subsidize the school taxes for the children that may be in those, those apartments as well. So I, I know that that was a big issue, that school districts were concerned that too many co-ops or condos are built uh, where they're not taxed at, at fee simple rate, then you're getting the rest of the town to subsidize the, the cost of school for those children.
But this only applies to condos that are owned, whereas an apartment is leased, that doesn't affect uh, like multifamily housing that are apartments. Or doesn't.
I mean, it would affect the owner of the building.
It would not rentals, rentals, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the people renting wouldn't be, but it, it would affect the building.
But it wouldn't affect. Would, it would affect the landlord, the owner of the.
It's presumably new construction, probably new construction, yeah, that would.
Well, it would affect the rent, that's less.
Right, we, we would move up the rent.
And would find its way.
Indirectly, it's, if, if higher tax burden on the owner, they, they share that up a lot.
If, but that, for, on a rental, a building of all rentals, it wouldn't apply at all.
Meaning.
Well, the landlord.
It would be reflected in the price of the rental, right?
Nobody.
Yeah, yeah.
I, except for, I think he's saying that a building that's only rentals would stay the same methodology.
Is that accurate, Josh?
That is correct, so right now, we, we value condominium and apartments in the same methodology.
And this would just strip off condominiums and rentals would stay.
Well, you could rent a condominium.
It would, it would strip off new condominium.
That's.
Right, just new, 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 so new construction, we can tax higher, you don't lose that, you don't lose that or lessen your tax if you then decide to rent it out and still have a higher, higher tax on it.
I think what Holly's asking is, how are, if somebody builds a building that consists of twenty rental units, how is that taxed?
That's, that is assessed using, well, we, we always use three approaches to value, but the predominant one is the income approach. And so we would capitalize the rents after reducing the net operating income by expenses and, and some other things. And that's basically how you find the value. So if a building.
So that's the tax. Yeah, so that's the taxation of a, of a commercial building, that would not, that's not covered by this home rule that we're talking about today, correct?
You are correct, yes.
Okay. So like, eh, yeah, so if anyone's renting and it's an affordable unit or whatever it may be and they're renting, this does not apply there, it's a commercial building, it's taxed differently than individual, individual condos or co-ops.
So, we build a, somebody builds another Chestnut Oaks, or like what, it wouldn't be able to build a, but then that is where this comes into play, but a ninety-one Bedford does not.
Right, that's, that's a part of it.
Right.
I just want to make sure that I was understanding where the lines were.
That is, that is correct, Holly.
Okay.
Correct, but if someone builds a building where they're selling individual units, then it would.
Ultimately, having that option.
Probably a smaller portion than it feels like.
Yeah, unless you have a big project, it's gonna be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So is there any downside to us approving this? Having this in our back pocket, is it?
Seems like a little tool, tool, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we?
Certainly not, in my opinion, I mean, it, it's the most equitable way to move forward as far as assessment. Uh, not only for Newcastle, but for the whole state.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, here.
Well, we made that decision with Chappaqua Crossing years ago to make, to, we passed a law to tax those at fee simple, and that's gonna really help in terms of taxation, both for the schools and the town.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for the owners, but for the schools and the town.
I know that, from the school district point of view, we really pushed for that taxation for the obvious reasons, that it would, you know, not overly burden schools. I guess I, I was just wondering what other economic impacts there would be, but, but you explained it well, so, um, it makes sense to me.
Okay, then I'll let Chris, this is something.
Thank you, Josh.
But I better quit while I'm ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Josh.
All right, thank you.
Um, so I just want to let the board know, um, during the meeting, um, that there's a, a water main break on Douglas Road. Anytime you've got, when you have one of these heavy-duty freezes and then the weather moderates, it just resets on, on level. Um, and it's, you know, you can, such a, so some Douglas Road in the vicinity of one thirty-four.
Yeah.
So how do you do that?
Um, okay, there are a large number of houses affected, all of those on Douglas from Mill River Road to Kip Street, a few houses on Hamilton, Olive Big, Martha Place, Spring Road, William Street, Dumbo Drive, Park Drive, and Windward Drive. Uh, have you done the, the police sent out a general nixle that went out, I have to ask the patrol to send out a rise. I have to ask the patrol to send out a rise one. They don't think water may not be restored until about five o'clock.
Alright, 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 that's not so bad, that's not so bad.
Please release some water.
Please send it out and you're welcome to come over.
Oh, no, I'm good. I'm good, I didn't have water.
Um, yes, please send out.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna, uh, uh, let the patrol desk know, um.
Can you let them know if you're going down there? People are not receiving nixles appropriately. And I checked because I received nixles, but I also signed up to receive them by text and I don't receive them by text and I checked my settings. And it says I should and people were saying over the weekend when we were, when, when, um, nixles were being sent out with road closures,
That's actually true.
Uh-huh.
that they were signed up and not receiving them.
Yeah, I used to get texts and I'm not getting the texts. Same, I was getting them from downtown, getting them from downtown, I get that, but I didn't get anything from here.
Yeah.
I'm getting them from downtown.
Yeah.
I get that, yeah.
I agree.
You, you really should have proposed email and texts.
I did, I am signing for email and text.
I get, same, I get the emails, not the texts.
Same, same, but I used to get the texts.
And I confirmed, I actually looked again to make sure the settings were correct and they are. But people did say, um, that they were not even receiving the ones by email.
I haven't heard that many.
And I know they were going out over the weekend about road closures.
No, they're definitely going out. Yeah, no, I mean, I've got it.
So if you're going down there, just mention.
Yeah, I'll go down and mention. Yeah, alright, can you, uh?
Next topic.
Alright, so what do we need to do with home rule? Do we need, um, we're just letting Chris know that we're interested? Or is there a legislation that wants us to propose?
Yes, right, yeah. Right, no, and he will, he will propose legislation, um, he'll, he'll tell me what connects.
A letter? Does he need a letter from us or a resolution?
He may need a resolution, I just don't know. I will find out and then what's in.
Okay, just confirm. Yeah, that. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh-huh.
So, um, now we're gonna remove to an interesting development with the Wright Guest House.
A, um, the letter that we had, uh, talked about expecting at the public hearing alive, it's in the packet, it's dated February second from Chippewa. They, uh, I, I won't try to characterize the letter, I'll just say that Summit and Toll, when they reviewed it, decided that they were withdrawing the application. I spoke to their council, confirmed that. So it's off the table. They're no longer going to proceed with their request to demolish the guest house and replace it with a replica.
Right, which means it will remain as is, they'll have to update it and utilize it however, however possible.
Shall I say that I am deeply relieved? Um, but not surprised. I mean, I, I know the author of this letter, I've spoken to her, I've passed on to her the same documentation that I've been passing on to you. Uh, there's a plan now for them to adaptively reuse the building as part of their clubhouse. They don't like it, but it's perfectly possible to do so. I'd like to mention that in this, this, I never quite understood this relationship with the state and I still don't. But, um, there was this letter of resolution that committed them to preserving the building. And they didn't buy the arguments that now it should be torn down. In that same letter of a, a, a resolution, there's a commitment by Summit Greenfield to put up an informational kiosk right on the grounds of Chapacore Crossing.
There is a kiosk.
Informational, it would have the history of the digest. That's a good idea. And I hope that they will meet that. I don't know whether the town planning board has that commitment or not. But, uh, there are several places I checked where it could go and.
I think the kiosk is there, I think it's in front of the Kukulab Building.
There is, there is.
There's nothing in it, but it's there.
Oh, there's nothing in it?
No, but it's there.
Well, then it's not very informational.
I missed it.
So long I'm thinking.
It's right in front of the Kukulab Building.
Well, that's the. Well, that's where it belonged.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um, the, the, the digest alumni put on a very successful exhibition at the greenhouse of the history from which you derive the materials for the kiosk. It can be done very quickly and easily. Anyway, good idea.
Thank you. Um, I do just want to let people know, uh, as you just said appropriately, that the guest house will be adaptively reused for Toll Brothers. It is not going to become a Reader's Digest museum. If we do not own it, we have no say over how they're gonna use it. If they choose to make it into a museum, they are more than welcome to. But it would again be private property, it wouldn't be open to the public unless they chose to do that. So I just want to put that out there that while the guest house is saved, it's not, it's going to be utilized how, um, adapt and adaptively reused, how Toll Brothers sees fit as part of their privately owned development. So I did just want to put out there, um, you can feel free to keep emailing us, but we cannot make them turn that into a Reader's Digest museum. But potentially we can put some information at the kiosk. And see maybe the historical site, we can figure out if there's something to do.
What about maybe a chap pack too?
Maybe, I mean, we could put pictures up and things like that, yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that?
She said at chap pack, I mean, we can put some pictures up, we, we don't have room to store documents and things like that.
Yeah, no, not, he don't has an archive or anything.
That's a whole separate issue, right?
Yeah.
Other, other magazines, you can look up, look, you can look up like, have made arrangements with major institutions who are, who can house that sort of thing and make it available
Right.
uh, to the public in a way that a local museum really can't do.
Right, right.
Is it, that's kind of a red herring. But, um.
So that can be figured out.
But there, but there are ways that we can preserve the history.
Perfect, alright.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that would make that a lot easier. Alright, uh, next, Jill, do you want to walk us through goals and objectives?
Yeah, yes, we will. So, um, the board was kind enough to share with me their goals and objectives. Um, I reviewed it with, attributed via email and then I'm thinking that, uh.
What page is it on?
Eight, eight, it's on, yeah. Uh, right before the information update regarding the order service sign location. Anyway, so, um, it's really for the board's information, um, these are the, the top um, goals and objectives that, um, each of you expressed. And the question is whether or not you can, um, agree on, you know, some of them are, are, um, in, in a lot of instances, um, you know, there, there's, you agree on a lot of things, um, some things you don't and what, what we're really looking for is some values. So that in addition to the must haves, the infrastructure projects, things like that, you know, we, we know what we need to do regarding replacing water mains, the Bedford Road pump station, you know, whether it be cement lining of water pipes or replacing, um, failing water pipes. Um, you know, staff knows what they need to do regarding that, but when it comes to, um, more of the would like to have as opposed to the need to have, it would be really helpful to staff if the board could come up with, um, a consolidated list that they could agree on just so that we have direction and we understand, you know, what, um, what grants should we be going for? Um, you know, where, where should we be putting our efforts to be able to move the board and the town closer to achieving these goals?
Jill, do we have a sense of when the, um, I think I actually know the answer to this, when we're gonna hear the presentation about the master plan, do we have a date in mind?
The rec master plan, um, I believe it's the beginning of March is where I think it's. Um, now, oh, I'm sorry, um, so there is a consolidated funding application.
If I can.
Um, in addition to that, there are, um, parks grants that are separated apart. So one of the things that, the great, one of the great things about the rec master plan is that it's a foundational document that we can then use to be able to be, be applied for and obtain grants.
We had a great meeting, I know I sent you guys an email, but last Thursday, the Parks and Recreation Commission, we had an awesome meeting, we talked about this and I just had some really great ideas and some, some things that he wanted me to share that I think are, are very reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
That would make a lot of members of the community happy and I, I know we all, we have to sit down and collaborate and make a list, but I want to make sure that everybody on the board has an opportunity to understand what's coming out of the rec master plan because I'm very excited about it.
It's, yeah, it's, it, yeah. We're, we're thrilled that we've been able to get, it's been a, a, a lot of years in coming, so we're really thrilled.
The chap lines are.
Jill, could we maybe reorganize this into like an Excel spreadsheet where we can check off, you know, who has, so I see, you know, a few people have infrastructure, a few people have sidewalks. So we can see really where we're overlapping in terms of the check marks and then see where the outliers are and maybe we can figure that out more easier.
Sure.
Right, and also. And I also think the, the better marriage of, of, of sort of terminology because we may be seeing the same thing in different ways.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, you know, for example, looking at what Vicky has about disputing old town land, zoning in a quarter mile around, uh, transit oriented development. I mean, it's the same concept, look at the town land, it's, it's not that I'm looking to develop within a half mile of, of, uh, our, our car stations.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah, and I see like sidewalks and walkability making an appearance in a lot of different ones.
Okay, right.
Right, and also I say sidewalks, you, you say chap line and that's included in the sidewalks, right?
Sidewalks and walkability are kind of the same thing. I think.
Right. Right, so they, they.
Right, right, it is.
As we says chap line, although, you know, we all have seen that, some reference to chap lines, but if not, exactly chap line.
Right.
Well, the only thing is with the sidewalks, there are different sidewalks. So I think we wanted to try to determine where, and I think we all actually said sidewalks.
Right.
But which ones? So is it gonna be the ones up one twenty, you know, there's Douglas Road, there's, which we all kind of said we weren't gonna do, but you know, there are different ones. So if, you know, we all say the chap line, but only a few people say one twenty, we might, that might inform where our money's gonna go if we get a, a grant. It'll form where that is going. So I think maybe under side, I think sidewalks and walkability are pretty similar. But under that, maybe we can highlight which ones.
Still down a little bit.
Yeah.
Right, well, and to that, you know, for example, I, I said sidewalks with Getney connecting the school at Getney.
Yeah.
I said same thing.
Uh, but that, you know, if it turns out that one twenty is more feasible and economically possible, I'm not related to that particular sidewalk.
Same.
Right, so I, I can tell you, yeah, that, that with, with, especially with these two sidewalks, so the one twenty, which would be, so we would
Yeah, I said that one too.
to piggyback it onto the, um, construction that's planned to extend the trunk line, um, from, um,
Yeah.
uh, from Hunt's place, I guess it is, um, up to the wagon road camp.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then extend the sidewalk from Netto up to that as well.
It's Markor.
Markor, sorry.
Markor, up to Warrimere.
It was long. Right, uh, well, up to wagon road camp, um, the, the southernmost entrance, um, so that it coincides with the construction project.
How far is that?
It's like, is it a third one now?
Somewhere like.
It isn't, it isn't very long, but it's, I think it's nine different property owners. And so you're dealing with a New York State DOT road, so it means that instead of easements, we would have to actually do takings from them. It involves New York State DOT, um, real estate, which is very challenging to work with.
Which is, it's been part of the holdup with the Melon sidewalk.
Melon, this, this, it's serious.
It's New York State real estate.
It has happened to that, two meetings, yes, that has come up.
It's been there for two or three years.
Yes. It's, it's crazy. It, it, we have all the approvals and they've been sitting on it for over a year and.
Yeah, the whole, yeah.
Anyway, so, so every time we, um, so, so my point just being that, um, it's baby steps with all of these, um, DOT, New York State DOT, um, roadways when we're talking about sidewalks. So even the one, um, the sidewalk from West Orchard School in Getney that would, um, taking, connecting Millwood downtown, which would be fabulous. Um, again, a section of that has to be along a New York State DOT roadway. So if there's any way that, you know, one of the things that we talked about was the fact that half of that roadway actually could, um, come off the road and go through Getney Park, that's townwide property. So all of a sudden we've like reduced half of it. The other idea was whether or not we could actually shift the roadway over. Um, and not have to take any deliveries. Um, so that involves us doing survey work and just seeing whether or not where the actual DOT right of way is and seeing whether or not that might be something we can do because if we, um, don't have to do takings and we can actually build the sidewalk in the state right of way, we eliminate that real estate approval that can hold up, uh, an otherwise completely approved project for keepers.
Mm-hmm.
So again, just baby steps. If we have an idea as to which sidewalks we're looking at, um, we can at least take incremental steps.
Exactly.
So that we are moving in the right direction.
So let's drill down into sidewalks when we look at that and now also, you know, like I know Vicky, Ally
Okay.
and I had, uh, like rec master plan in there.
Mm-hmm.
So obviously, I think I did have something there about turfing the upper Getney field, but
Right.
obviously, once we see the rec master plan, we're gonna then want to, and I think all of us, we're gonna then dive in, I don't, it makes sense, but we'll then dive into the rec master plan. There's gonna be more than one recommendation in there and then we'll see what in that makes, makes sense.
It's exciting.
Yeah, and one of the things that we just really want to keep an eye on with the rec master plan is, um, what are our priorities for grants?
Exactly.
Um, and let's just take a look at like a, a five-year plan as to, you know, which ones we're gonna go for, what years. And just be very sensitive to the fact, not sensitive, but just attuned to the fact that, um, uh, the consolidated grant, um, application uh, takes and shifts its focus every year. So there may be some years that, you know, gosh, our number one priority isn't included in this, but our number three priority is, so let's just, you know, change your, your agenda.
Do we get, do we get a preview of that or do you?
The, the CFAs, um, they come out.
I know the deadline's the end of July, I'm not sure when we actually find out.
Tomorrow. I'm gonna say April, March, April, they, they come out and they change every year.
And so you won't know until it comes out what this year's focus is, so you can't like plan for next year.
Yeah. No, so we know that like, you know, there, there's always some sort of recreation thing, there's always some sort of water projects, but oftentimes it's, it's clean water and we are not the social justice communities that are earmarked for those monies, so
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
we just have to go through it and figure out, you know, what it is.
Okay.
So Jill, for the staff, would you be able to handle the grant process for both the sidewalks and the rec master plans? So that's all on the table.
Right, so we just have to figure out where our, um, best chances of receiving a grant are based upon, you know, what the CFA focuses on any given year and then we'll sit down with super units, sort of go through it and I can figure out which are the right, uh, grants for us to be targeting and then just go for it.
That's great.
Okay.
And keep our fingers crossed.
Of course.
Okay, good, alright, so to be continued.
I'd kind of make another request as you're kind of, as we're drilling down there, because, um, for some of them,
Of course.
can you flag forms that are particularly high difficulties or unlikely to, to type dreams?
Yeah, you know, practice.
Um, just. Can I just say something so interesting about high dreams? So, you know, so like, you know, in, in maybe the next two months, we may find out whether or not we're actually getting a break in there eliminating the grade crossing at, you know, um, at Roy and Hook Road. So when you want to talk about just projects that we, shh, no, but just projects that, you know, yeah.
Which is it?
Just, just projects that we're really, um, we were really reaching for.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the basketball court, it wasn't necessarily a financial reach. It, it wasn't cheap, but that was on the radar for fifteen years, twenty years.
Twenty, yeah, under twenty-five years.
It was, and, and we didn't have a location and we, and just, it kind of took a group and Jeremy was part of that to just kind of say, okay, let's finally get it done and let's do it, so.
This. Yeah, let's just.
I mean, it was I, I joke, because every year.
We had a little internal problems about, but, you know, housing it there.
But every year I, I did the budget when I first started doing the budget. Like, okay, basketball court, are we ever doing this? No, leave it in there. You know, it was in the capital budget, but nobody ever discussed it. It, it, it was somebody's idea, but it didn't go anywhere, so.
Are there any other things that are sitting out there like that that we should?
Um.
Nothing.
I mean, like.
I think the chap line was a more recent.
Yeah, I, the chap line is something kind of like that because that's a heavy lift though.
Yeah, no, chap line.
I mean, that requires so, oh, patching together multiple grants, it requires getting support from.
Maybe the bridge comes.
A lot of different groups, so, um, yeah, I mean, it's,
Yeah, that's the plan.
we've taken it to a certain point right now and, and now the funding is really the big holdup. I mean, you know, that was originally estimated, I don't know if it was ten or twelve million, certainly it can't be that right now.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
It's probably north of fifteen, so, um, you know, we were gonna cobble together a couple of five million dollar grants, we thought and, and do it in segments.
We'll talk about increasing walkability, oh my god.
It may can't be.[1770.02]
But talk about increasing walkability, oh my god.
It would be fabulous, well, one of the things that we really can do with the chap line, though, is we can start uh, putting together letters of support from different community groups.
Mm-hmm.
And that's really something that we, that that we as a board can do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, identify community groups that we could ask to write a letter and support, um, the boosters, the.
I think the. Yeah, I've already contacted the sports boosters.
Yeah, you know, the, I don't know, merchants, just chamber commerce, um, just different community groups, it would be so fabulous um, to be able to get those letters of support and I I have to tell you, they, um, uh, we obviously didn't get the the five million dollar grant that we applied for initially, um, last year. And one of the reasons why they told us that we didn't get it is because we hadn't started the process of obtaining an easement from Metro North, we've started that process.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't help but think that, um, we didn't walk in with a volume of of letters and support.
Yeah, right.
Which I really think would have, you know, made a difference, when you're talking about, you're asking somebody five million dollars and it's only part of the project, I think they wanna see a stack of letters.
Yeah.
And a stack of support and we didn't really have that, um, so I think next time around, that would be key for us to be able to provide. So, okay, throw that out there. Okay.
All right, so you'll get that back to us?
Yes, I.
And we can talk that, we can talk about that again in the next, yeah, yeah.
So there were a couple of um, hiring items and then one additional appointment that we had.
Go back.
Back to back, exactly.
Yeah.
Before we finish, should we, should we do resolutions?
Um, well, why don't we do resolution before?
Before the resol, no, one, one of the resolutions is.
You'll have to.
Ah, right, okay, so why don't we, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
Can I just ask the board whether or not they have any questions on any new ministry files?
No.
Okay.
Right.
Um, just one, actually, it's not a question, but for the the T-shirt contract, uh, we, are we specifically sending it to Steph?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I've I've already cleared it with, um, Christine Gray, I sent him another email.
Perfect. So that's a group out of Pleasantville with uh, differently able people and children who actually have an incredible uh, company where they do T-shirts, sweatshirts, embroidery, all that and I think it would be fabulous if if we could utilize them, they are, they are approved uh, by the state.
Yeah, the state, it's done for all of the, all of their like, um, parks and stuff.
They're on the state list, yes. Mm-hmm.
Big contracts.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, they also do food.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, with all kinds of.
So I I moved to adjourn, uh, just moved adjourned.
Work session, open an executive session for appointments.
So.
Second.
All in favor.
I, I.
All right, thank you, so we are back to finish up our work session, really just uh, with resolutions.
I'll speed you this correctly on my account, I'll speed, all right, I moved to approve payments of claims in the amount of one million eight hundred three dollars, eight hundred sixty-nine, twenty-six cents. Listen to the summary pre-check writing, uh, report and detailed, detailed reports, all dated February sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Checks the issued amount of each claim listed on Wednesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
I second.
All in favor.
I, I.
Uh, I moved to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of sixty-two thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars, ninety-one cents. Listen to the summary AP check register and detail about your detailed reports, all dated January thirty-first of this year, checks were distributed each claim listed on Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor.
I.
I moved to authorize the hiring of Katree Bachman Coaster and Sharon Rosa Lopez's recreational permits from the Recreation Parks Department to serve as drivers for seniors for the hourly wage of eight hundred dollars per hour, effective February fifteenth, this year.
I second.
All in favor.
I, I.
Um.
We're holding number four and number five.
Four, number five, so that's, is that it?
Let me, rest.
One, you wanna grab it?
You want me to?
Sure.
No, I'll do this one. Uh, I move to adopt a following resolution, whereas on January tenth, twenty twenty-three and January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, the town board and planning board held joint work sessions to discuss draft legislation that would create a new specially permitted use in the Chappaqua Hamlet under town code sixty dash four hundred thirty, the draft legislation. And whereas the town board and planning board wish to continue their collaborative work on the draft legislation by forming a four member committee, the working group, to work with town staff and town council on developing proposed revisions to said legislation for consideration for the, by the full town board. Now therefore, be it resolved that following individuals who are appointed to serve on the working group for the draft legislation, Lisa Katz, town supervisor, Alexandra Chantab, town board member, Thomas Curly, planning board member, Eldad, his last name, planning board member. Got help? Uh, further resolved.
We love you, Eldad.
That with the input and advice of the aforementioned planning board members, together with town staff and town council, the town board representatives on the working group shall endeavor to develop further revisions to the draft legislation, which they deem advisable for consideration by the full town board. And be it further resolved that the working group shall constitute a public body within the meaning of Public Officers Law one oh two, twenty-two.
I second.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I.
I'll be sent it.
Is that okay?
I hope we have more than Eldad and Eldad.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
All right, friends at home.